Well, good evening, everyone. And welcome to our City Council meeting. Could I please have Mr. Ron Bailey come forward from New Beginnings Church for the opening prayer? He's not here. I guess he's not here. Let's go to call to order. And I'd like to call to order the agenda for the City Council meeting of June 3, 2015. And Chief, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Faria.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Solvera.
Present.
Stonegrove.
Here.
Here. Consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Mrs. Stonegrove?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Stonegrove to approve the agenda as read. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to 5A Flag Day proclamation. Do we have someone here from the Elks? Come forward, Mr. Cotta. It is a great honor that I present this proclamation recognizing Flag Day 2015. Whereas the first flag of the United States was designed in December 1775 to represent the original 13 colonies with 13 stripes with alternating red and white, 13 white stars on a blue field. And whereas in April 1818, Congress adopted a resolution indicating that the number of stripes should be 13 and the number of blue, excuse me, the blue field should carry one star for each of the 20 states in the Union, and that the new star should be added for each state thereafter, admitted. Twenty-eight new stars were added to the flag before July 4, 1912, and the flag with 48 stars flew over the nation for 47 years until just before the Vietnam War. Stars were added in 1959 for Alaska and 1960 for Hawaii, making our present flag with 50 stars and 13 stripes. And whereas the Star-Spangled Banner and the Pledge of Allegiance were written to honor the flag of the United States as an emblem of liberty, freedom, and enlightenment to all loyal Americans. The Order of Elks requires a formal observance of Flag Day on the 14th day of June each year, beginning a nationwide observance in 2008. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the City Council members of the City of Los Vanos hereby proclaim and recognize Saturday, June 14, 2015, as Flag Day in Los Vanos. Thank you. Certificate of appreciation to Mr. Bussie's 5th grade class at Volta Elementary School. Could I please have his 5th grade class come forward? Is Mr. Bussie here also? Before we begin, I'd like to introduce Sandra Benetti, who is going to give us a background on this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Sandra Benetti. I'm with the Community and Economic Development Department. I am here to introduce to you Mr. Bussie's 5th grade class from Volta Elementary School. These students have worked hard to prepare a collage of ways to conserve water, and they wanted to share it not only with their peers and their family, but also with the community. And we've posted this poster out in the lobby for everybody to see and view their ways to share, and if you'd like to add, go ahead and bring those comments forward to City Hall. And with that, I'd like to give it to the mayor.
Well, we all know how important water conservation is, and anything that we can do to conserve water in this community now, as to what's happening in our state because of our lack of rain, we can't thank these young people enough, and Mr. Bussie, for bringing to light what it is to conserve water. I hope you've had a lot of learning lessons and continue to practice what your teacher has instilled in you, and at this time, it was a great gratitude and appreciation that I present the certificate of recognition presented to Mr. Bussie's 5th grade class, Volta Elementary School, in recognition of your efforts to bring awareness to water conservation. Thank you, and keep up the good work.
I'm just proud of my class, and then also discussing ways in this severe drought that we can conserve water is important to instill in young people, and I'm proud of them. They're good kids, creative kids.
Thank you so much, and if you have any updates or anything that you think about, please come back and give us a report. I'd love to have you come back, okay? Thank you. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the Council Chamber informational table. And at this time, if you have a cellphone, please place it on vibrate or turn it off. Last time I said that, I didn't do it, so... Okay, do we have anyone who'd like to speak at a public forum?
Good evening, Council members. Mr. Mayor, my name is Rick Toscano. I'm the department, or the chairman of the American Legion Post 166 Boys State Program. This is Alan Cotta. He's our vice commander of the post 166. He and I did the interviews this year. The American, just a real short rundown of what the Boys State Program is. Every year, we take about 1,000 students between their junior and senior year, send them to Sacramento State. They live in the dorms for a week, and they build government. Each floor of the dorm is a city. Each dorm is a county, and the whole group is the state. They elect local council members and mayors, police chiefs, fire chiefs, county supervisors, all the way up through assemblymen, a governor, and all that. Then they pick out of the thousand, and they run the government, they build it, and then they run it for a week. Not as much fun as you guys have. They, then they pick two out of that, and they send those two to Washington, D.C., where 100 of them meet, two from each state, and they have Boys Nation. And they do the same thing, where they build on a federal level. This year, Alan and I had the privilege of interviewing 10 students between Pacheco High School and Los Vanos High School. Every year, we ask them, can you give us like, on a scale of 1 to 10, we'd like you to pick out some nines and tens over here, if you got them here? Well, this year, we got a bunch of elevens, okay? Incredible kids. The staff at the school does great, the counselors, these guys, it's a bear. It's not fun picking one guy out of five, because they all do so well. Just, and it gives you great pleasure in seeing what's coming up through the ranks, you know, because they're gonna be supporting us someday. In any case, I'm gonna have Alan introduce them, and if they want to say something, and hopefully they will introduce their mothers and fathers, and we'll go from there.
Again, to reiterate, Rick, thank you, City Council, Mr. Mayor. Our first gentleman from Pacheco High School, Matthew Murphy.
I'd like to thank my parents for giving me the opportunity to do this, and these fine gentlemen here. My mom's back there. I know she's proud of me, and my dad.
Stand up, Mom. Where are you? Okay.
This opportunity to learn about our government is a great thing, and learn about what you people up here do.
In case either one of the gentlemen we selected can't go, we have an alternate from Pacheco also, Mr. Tyler Turner.
I'm thankful for this opportunity, and I'm thankful for my mom, Francine Turner. I am also thankful for my history teacher, Mr. Austin, for recommending me, and I am thankful for this opportunity.
Thank you. And our outstanding candidate from Los Vanos High School, John Spankowski.
Thank you. I'd just like to express how fortunate I feel to be given this opportunity to represent Los Vanos High School as their Boys State candidate, and I would like to give special recognition to my mom and dad, who are sitting right over there, and of course, my little brother, for their love and support that have helped me and carried me to this point in my life. So, thank you guys very much.
We're very confident that they are gonna represent their schools, and their city, and our post very, very well. We're very proud of this group. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak at a public forum?
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm Mary Ann Perdiso, local resident, and I'm here along with the Girls State Committee, Nancy Williamson and Barry Bausch, from our local JV, V. Penetti, American Legion Auxiliary Unit 166, to introduce Girls State delegates. Girls State is a six-day leadership conference, which is held at Claremont McKinnon College, that helps develop leadership skills and teaches the delegates how to government runs at the city, country, and state level, including setting up mock governments at each level. This program is sponsored by American Legion units. The girls are chosen from Los Vanos and are among 520 entities from all over the state.
Okay. We are pleased to introduce you to you, our delegate from Los Vanos High School, Peyton And our Los Vanos High School alternate, Ashton Thomas. And our delegate from Pacheco High School, Stephanie Sellen. Each girl will now introduce her family and say something about herself. Let them each step up and put in.
Hi, my name is Peyton Brazil. I'm 17-years-old and a junior at Los Vanos High School, where I participate in many clubs, including FFA, S-Clubs, CSF, National Honor Society, and I'm currently your 2015 Miss May Day, and a presenter on the Heritage Foundation Speaking Team. And I would like to give special recognition to my parents, Jenny and Jerry Brazil, for all the great things they've done for me. They've given me all these great opportunities, and I'm so thankful to be here as your Girls State candidate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Sellen, and I am a junior at Pacheco High School. I am currently the president of the Drama Club. I am vice president of First Priority, and I'm also involved in other clubs such as Interact, and I'm also on the swim team. And I want to recognize my mom, Julie Sellen, she's over there. And I actually have the honor that my grandmother was able to attend Girls State in 1959 as a delegate, so I'm really honored to have that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ashton Tomas. I'm a 17-year-old junior at Los Vanos High School, where I currently served as the 2014, 2015 Los Vanos FFA president, and I also participate in clubs such as ASV and the Portuguese Club. I would like to say a special thank you to both of my parents, only my mom's here tonight, Kim Tomas. I would like to thank them for always supporting me in everything I do, and I am completely honored to be an alternate for this wonderful organization.
Thank you for this opportunity to introduce to you our Jane Z. Penetti, American Legion Auxiliary Unit Number 166, 2015 Girls State delegates and alternate. Thank you.
Girls, I remember your parents in junior high. They were, they were good people, and do. I'm losing it. We'll just take a minute or so while the students leave, and then we'll go on with the next presentation. Hang on just a minute, Curtis, we'll restart.
Good evening, Mayor, and rest of the council. I just came here tonight, we came here tonight. My name is Curtis Fornier. I'm a volunteer for the American Cancer Society. I'm a California hero of hope. I'm a cancer patient and a cancer survivor. This is my wife, Teresa, who's a caregiver, team captain, and committee member for the Relay for Life, and our staff partner, Paulina Lusk. Just to kind of give you a summary of what we did, we had a relay this past weekend, and the mayor attended our opening ceremony. Mr. Faria was also there. And to kind of give you what we accomplished this year as a community, we raised $77,217. We had 32 teams. All that money that we do, all that, the money we, all the donations we receive, 100% of it go to the American Cancer Society and Relay for Life. This benefits patient services, such as myself. Currently, I take chemotherapy every day, oral chemotherapy every day, 365 days a year. And without the American Cancer Society and Relay for Life, I probably wouldn't be standing in front of you today as a survivor. I was labeled terminally ill in 2010, and they gave me two years' survival to live, and I'm still here. And the biggest reason for that is because of the American Cancer Society and Relay for Life. I would like to encourage all of you to come out and join us next year. We do, we celebrate life, and we remember the ones that we have lost, and we continue to fight back against this disease. And if you've never been to Relay, I would encourage all of you to come out and see what it's all about, enjoy the time with us, and enjoy the celebration of life. Thank you. Thank you.
Curtis, anytime that you have a report on events that you have, please come back and let us know.
Absolutely.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak at a public forum?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate a few minutes tonight to introduce to you four of our employees that we're very proud of. What you see before you tonight is firefighters that have either been promoted or were recently hired because of Chief Gentini's retirement in September. We did not add any new positions to our department, however, his departure allowed room for upward movement and then replacing firefighter. Every one of these firefighters here had their badges pinned on them as they were promoted, and we really appreciate the council members that were there to support them during those First of all, I'd like to thank the Human Resource Department. They put a lot of time and effort into assisting me in selecting these individuals for the promotions that they received. There's a lot of work that goes into making a very difficult selection out of a very deep pool of talented employees. So first of all, I'd like to introduce Jacob Sawyer. Jacob Sawyer is our newest career firefighter. He's an eight-year veteran with our department. He is currently a firefighter-one, which is basically the Fire Academy for Fire Service, an EMT for a number of years. Jacob came to us as a volunteer. As he was a volunteer for us, he spent seven years with CAL FIRE as a seasonal firefighter, where he honed his skills in wildland interface firefighting, as well as continuing to be a volunteer for us. So he's got eight years of outstanding experience. During that time, he attended numerous courses in rescue systems, low-angle rope rescue, trench rescue, many, many wildland classes that are integral to our survival in the urban interface when we go on wildland fires. Jacob will be a very important piece of our training modules to meet California's command standards for wildland fire suppression. So, welcome, Jacob. Next to him is newly-promoted engineer Fernando Garcia. Fernando has 14 years with our department. He also has a number of firefighting certificates that he gained when he was in the military that were issued to the United States Air Force that allowed him to come into our department with a lot of experience. He's also an emergency medical technician for the state of California. He's also a state-certified fire officer, which, if you know anything about the fire service, it takes 12 courses to become a state-certified fire officer. That's hundreds of additional hours on top of the academy. He achieved that while he was a volunteer, as well as a career firefighter for us. He also is specializing in firefighter survival. He's been instrumental in putting together extrication props in our department to teach our firefighters how to extricate themselves from entanglements during structure collapse that we may get trapped into the building. His wildland experience goes also into Fish and Wildlife Service here in town. He worked for them for seasonals a couple of years, and so between him and Jacob, they are going to sharpen our CICCS skills and create our certifications to meet national standards. We really appreciate both Jacob and Fernando's efforts in that. Next, Captain Roger Hughes. You're gonna jump around a little bit. Roger's also a 14-year veteran with our department. He is an EMT. The last nine years, he's been an engineer for our department, a lot of experience fighting fires and running EMS calls in town prior to this promotion. Roger's also a state-certified fire officer. He's a graduate of the Santa Clara County Fire Officers Academy, which is on top of the firefighter academy. He's a rescue systems warrant-qualified individual. He's got numerous advanced incident command courses to prepare him for the next steps, and also train him for large assignments that we have here in town. He's also a graduate of the fire attack, rescue, and survival courses that he's attended. Roger is our technical guru in our department. One of his assignments is the programming of all of our portable rate- One of his assignments is the programming of all of our portable radios, our pagers, a number of other technologically advanced things that probably most firefighters aren't skilled at. Roger takes that on and he's very successful at what he does. Next, Mason Hurley. He's our new assistant chief. Mason replaced myself in that position. Mason has twenty-five years of experience with our department. He's also emergency medical technician. He's a state-certified fire officer. He's a state-certified chief officer, which pretty much doubles the requirements that a fire officer has to have, as well as an associate's degree in fire technology from Columbia College and he's one semester away from getting his bachelor's degree. Mason's also an adjunct instructor from Merced College. He teaches the Fire Academy as well as a fire technology course with myself. Rescue Systems One and Two, state fire marshal instructor certified. He just recently completed all of his courses to be a strike team leader for out-of-county assignments to take our strike teams from Merced County to all over the state of California. So he has done everything possible to prepare himself for this position and I'm very proud of him. Mason's primary focus over the next few years of his career is going to be fire prevention and fire training. He will pretty much take my place in the fire prevention world there. So I'm introducing to you sixty-one years of experience in firefighting, all gained within the Los Banos Fire Department. So welcome, congratulations. They're all gonna do well, they'll all make you very proud, I'm sure. Thank you.
And everyone is under the age of thirty, right? Well, on a personal note, our fire department is second to none. Our response times, Tim, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it's under five minutes anywhere in town. Is that right? Most of the calls that these firefighters go out on are all, or most of them are emergency medical services. The countless lives that they save in this community and what they've done to increase the safety of all residents, not just in medical emergencies but in firefighting techniques. Sixty-one years, just with four people. And if I brought everyone up here, I can't imagine all the years that are listed and the certificates that these firefighters have earned. We owe you a great deal of gratitude for what you've done and also making Los Banos your home and deciding to stay here. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and staff. As a business community, we are always looking for ways to increase revenue, to not only sustain but to grow our business. In today's economy, we have to turn over every rock to find new streams of revenue. One of those streams is tourism. I have long been a believer that Los Banos has a lot to offer and that we can and should be not just a place to drive through, but a place to come to. It is with that idea in mind that we've introduced the Visitors Guide in 2010, brought back the Tomato Festival in 2011, followed by the 2011 Visitors Guide. We're now working on the 2015 Visitors Guide, which will have updated information that shows what Los Banos has to offer tourists and will be distributed in visitor centers outside our community, hotels and motels, chambers of commerce around our area and other areas where tourists would frequent. I'm here tonight to let people know that we're doing this and it's an opportunity to promote their business and to ask the city to continue to be a supporter of this project because what's good for business is good for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Martha Furia, Los Banos Chamber of Commerce. And I just have a few updates on the happenings in Los Banos. First of all, tomorrow, the Los Banos Tea Party will be presenting a question-and-answer opportunity on how the drought is going to affect you. It is at St. John's Lutheran Church beginning at 7:00 PM. And Chris White from CCID, our own Mark Fatchen, Sean Stevenson, a Valley rancher, and Mike Lynch from Assemblyman Adam Gray's office will be on hand to answer your questions. On Tuesday, June the ninth, the chamber will celebrate a ribbon-cutting for head-on tours. We ask you to join us at 10:00 AM at the chamber office for that. We celebrated a ribbon-cutting with Carpets Plus on Tuesday, welcoming them to their new location at 402 West Pacheco Boulevard. We are also happy to welcome New Frontier Investment Consulting and Management LLC to membership in our chamber. New Frontier is the company that is working on bringing the family entertainment center to Los Banos. We are also still busy planning our second annual Father's Day in the park. This year's event will be on Saturday, the twentieth of June, from 9:00 to 3:00. You can start off with breakfast with the Los Banos Lions Club. They'll be serving a breakfast of pancakes, eggs, bacon, coffee and juice in the recreation hall from 8:00 to 11:00 for seven dollars. After breakfast, you can visit our vendors, take a look at the vehicles in the car show and listen to live music. We're still accepting applications for vendors of all kinds and you can contact us at 826-2495 or you can get an application online at losbanos.com. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Come on up guys. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's my pleasure to introduce to you some new employees with the city and some new positions within our department. So we'll let them all get up here and get situated. Like the fire department, we have a lot of experience and we're transitioning many of these positions or these employees from one position to another. And for example, the CSO position is our jailer. They run our jail system. They handle the inmates every day, they feed them, they make sure everything is taken care of, they book them into our computers and the county computer. So transitioning the CSO to a police officer has been a very, found to be a very productive way of hiring police officers because we go out and arrest them, we process them, put them in jail and we go back out. That's a lot quicker than trying to do it in a different way. So first of all, I want to introduce our newest code enforcement officer, Brittany Rogers. Brittany has been with us for just over a year and a half as a dispatcher. As we all know, dispatchers are the unsung heroes of the police department, so I'm sad to see, I think we're all sad to see Brittany leave the dispatch group, but we're really excited to see her, spread her wings if you will, as a code enforcement officer with the city. She moved to Los Banos with her family in 2004. She graduated high school in 2006 and she has a seven-year-old son named Nicholas. So congratulations Brittany on your new assignment. We'll move on to our trainees. Trainees are the positions that we send to the police academy to become our future officers. It's a six-month police academy that we send them to in Morgan Hill. It's a very rigorous academy, both mentally and physically, and it's very challenging. They spend a lot of nights away and these four gentlemen are going to be attending the academy starting June ninth. And for six months, they will drive practically every single day back and forth to Morgan Hill in one car together. So just the excitement of doing that alone is gonna be fun for these guys. So first off, we will start with Stephen Freitas. Stephen, say hello to everyone. Initially, the idea was to have each of them speak on their own behalf, but they're as nervous as I am when we get up in front of people, so I will speak on their behalf. Stephen has been a CSO with the department for over eight years. He was born and raised in Los Banos and he graduated high school in 2002. Stephen is engaged to Leanna, who I know that she is here, I'm just not sure where. There she is, beautiful Leanna. She works at the Merced County District Attorney's Office here in Los Banos and they have two beautiful children together. So congratulations Stephen. Next up is CSO Brian Butler. He's also going to the police academy. He's been with the police department for over a year and he has an AA in criminal justice. He's from Dos Palos and he graduated in 2004. His mother Annette and his father Bob are, are they here tonight? I didn't see them. Bob is a, Bob Butler is a longtime California Highway Patrol officer in Los Banos that any of you in law enforcement for any number of years know Bob. He's quite the character, he is now retired, he is a great man and we're glad to see Brian now going to the academy, following in his dad's footsteps. Now, I was gonna say something about Dos Palos, but I'll move forward. Our next CSO going to the police academy is Omar Mondragon. Say hello to everyone Omar. Omar started out actually as a police explorer with the department about four years ago. He was hired as a CSO just over a year ago and now good fortune has fallen upon him and he is reaching one of his dreams to go to the police academy. He was born and raised in Los Banos, unfortunately, for some reason, he attended school in Dos Palos. We don't know, but that's okay, we're not gonna use that against him. Omar is the young, his brothers, his parents Aurelio and Lucia tell me that he may or may not be the best one of the three. So congratulations Omar. And last but certainly not least is Anthony Velas. Say hello Anthony. Anthony is a new employee with the city, however, he was a Los Banos police explorer for over five years with the department. So he does not come to us completely green. He has been around the police department and knows the ins and outs of the police department very well. He was born in San Jose, but he moved to Los Banos about twelve years ago and he graduated from Los Banos High School in 2009. Anthony is the middle of three children and his brother Eli, many of you know him, works in City Hall. He's the nice guy that's always smiling. He works in our finance department. So I would like to welcome Anthony to the family. And that is the new employees for the police department. We're really, really excited to have them attending the police academy. I certainly wouldn't want to do it, it was twenty weeks when I was there and now it's much more than that. It's much more physically demanding. I went running with them up in Morgan Hill last academy and it's tough. I do not look forward to these guys going, but I look forward to live vicariously through them because they're gonna have a lot of great stories every day, every night, they're gonna spend a lot of hours away. Brittany is gonna do a great job as our code enforcement officer and we're really excited to move forward. We're filling in some holes that we have in our department and we have a lot of youth. We have a lot of local people here that are gonna stay with our city for a long time to come. I also would like to thank, like Chief Marison did, our Human Resources Department because the police department, as I have mentioned before, often spends a lot of time recruiting new employees. So to Jana and Lucy, I say thank you for all your assistance over the years. That is all I have for tonight. If you guys have any questions of me, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Well, I've witnessed firsthand the number of hours that you spend recruiting and interviewing and when they're through with the Los Banos process, they are good to go anywhere.
Yes, they are.
So I am extremely pleased and to grow our own with a code enforcement officer, of which we desperately need another one, thank you, and four new officers. As soon as you finish the academy is absolutely outstanding because there's a good chance that you might want to remain in Los Banos and we hope that happens.
They better.
Pardon me?
I said they better, Mayor. I apologize for interrupting, but they better.
I can't control him, but, so you'll have to answer to him, not to me. But anyway, we are so happy that you'll be going through the academy and we'll welcome you here with open arms and I can't wait to your badge-pinning ceremony. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum and we will go on to item number seven. Consideration of Approval of Consent Agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Check register for number 153392 through 153605 in the amount of $2,402,679.28. Minutes for the adjourned city council meeting of May 26, 2015, and the recommendation is to approve all items as submitted.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to remove an agenda item for discussion? If not, do I have a motion? Mr. Furia?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Mr. Silbera?
I'll second.
Move by Furia, second by Silbera to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
None carried.
Let's go on to item eight, public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city or prior to the public hearing. Item 8A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration on the levy of the proposed annual assessment for the 2015-2016 fiscal year for landscaping and lighting districts one through seven and nine through nineteen. 8A1, city council resolution number 5663, there's a correction, please whoever makes the motion, it's not 5662, it's 5663. Confirming diagram and assessment and levying assessments for assessment districts numbers one through seven and nine through nineteen for 2015-2016 fiscal year. All right, and let's go to Mark Fatchen.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Tonight, we are presenting this to you in order to complete the preparation of the annual assessments of the city of Los Banos eighteen landscaping and lighting districts. Staff request that the city council takes the following actions. Conduct a notice public hearing to solicit input on the landscaping and lighting districts' annual assessments. Adopt the resolution confirming the diagram and assessment, the levying assessments for landscaping and lighting districts numbers one through seven and nine through nineteen for fiscal year 2015-2016. Little background, city of Los Banos administers eighteen landscaping and lighting districts, which provides for maintenance of certain improvements in each of the districts. Each year, the city council holds a public hearing at which time they confirm and authorize the levying of the assessments presented in the assessment rolls for each landscaping and lighting districts. The assessments found in the annual report for each landscaping and lighting districts are prepared by the Public Works Director City Engineer. They're as filed with the city clerk and also available at the Public Works main office on Madison. Our public notice was published in the local paper on May 22, 2015. The maintenance districts and improvements, I'll give you a list of some of the improvements that appear in the maintenance districts. Street lighting, landscaping, street medians and right-of-way, storm drain facilities, water, sewage and disposal, sidewalks and street signs, parks and related facilities, masonry walls and fences and/or traffic signals. Each of your landscaping and lighting district engineers report consists of six parts, of which two are part of your staff report tonight. The other ones are basically lists of the assessed parcels that we give to the county. But the first one is plans and specs and that's, that one is at the Madison Office of Public Works because it's many, many plans and specs. Part B is an estimate of the 2015-2016 landscaping and lighting district maintenance and improvement costs and that's part of your attachments. Part C is an assessment of the estimated cost of the improvements on each benefit of parcel of land within the district. Part D is a statement of the method by which the undersigned has determined the amount proposed to be assessed against each parcel, which is also part of your package today. Part E, part E and part C are pretty, basically the same. It's solicit the names and addresses of the owners of the real property within each landscaping and lighting district. This is the one that goes to the assessor's office and produces the assessment on the tax rolls. Part F is a diagram showing all the parcels of real property within this landscaping and lighting district. This is key to the, actually to the part A, the plans and specs. It's pretty much the plans and specs. A couple of these do repeat themselves as far as what's in them. The resolution attached allows the city to submit the levies to the county to be placed on the tax rolls. These assessments provide for the maintenance and improvements in the landscaping and lighting districts for 2015-2016. Now, you're approving the entire, all the assessments on all the districts, whether they went up, stayed the same, either one of these. We actually have seven districts that are- We actually have seven districts that are going up, 6% by 10%, 1% by 5%, which was the maximum. The districts that have gone up basically are in order to get rid of the deficit and the deficit, except for two of these landscaping and lighting districts, are going down. And one of them is...I'll cite which one it is. On the Meadowlands, that one is going up and that has potential for more units to be added to it, which will help that figure. That is the one that as we add lots in that area of the world, we're gonna tie them into this district as much as possible, have their storm drain go this direction, and to limit a little bit of what we do with green space in the new ones. So we will be adding units, but not quite as much green space so we get more benefit for everyone in the entire district. And that was a landlocked, devolved-out district, but now we see a way that we can get some more units into that and help that district. The other one is the Talbot Park and that's going...actually, that's going deficit quite extensively. And if you remember, Talbot Park used to be a regular park before we put in the basin there, Basin Park. And we had a commitment to Home Depot of $650,000 that that money was going in to build that basin with the new park and that money had a term on it and we were within the last year of that term or we had to give it back to them and still provide them a basin. So we, at that time, had to go and build that. They actually got some of that money back, a little percentage of that, and start the assessment district at that time, knowing full well we only had two members in that district. So we...just to give you some idea, if just the open land improves in the next few years in that area, and not the land that's gonna be redeveloped, because there's a lot of land there for that too, but just the land that's unimproved, it's about 45 acres, that will add $80,000 to this district. So this district does have an end game. It's just we're really far away from it. We have such a few in it at the moment. So that's why you see that happening. If you actually take that district away, you can see that our overall negatives are decreasing quite a bit, where our deficits are going down and there is a good plan to go down on. Some of these districts, if you looked at the flow chart, they do have less revenue than expenditures, but their estimated fund balance...the way you do this is you can have up to 50% of an estimated fund balance and you should have about 50% carried over. And in addition to that, any capital improvement that you have in the district can add on to that. Well, we have several districts that have an estimated fund balance that's high and so it's making up for the deficit and spending at the moment. So there's one five years out, so there's no need to raise one like that. The goal in the future is to get these so they balance out so all you're looking at is cost of living adjustments as much as possible. You don't see cost of living adjustments on this because...on the ones that went up, the cost of living adjustment will be lost in here because they're going up the maximum amount. On the other ones, we have enough reserve at the moment in most of them to attain that. But you will soon see as we level out and balance out, we do have to keep with cost of living because we do have contractors that do the work out there and things like that. At this point, we're not doing that. We have other ways of doing that. That's my presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
All right. At this time, are there any questions from council? Let's go...if not, let's go to the public hearing to receive public comment and consideration on the levy of the proposed annual assessment for the 2015-2016 fiscal year for landscape and lighting districts. Oh, do you have a question first? I'm sorry.
Mark, I just had a question on the flow sheet. It looks like, for the most part, the commercial properties stayed the same, which you said there may not have been a need to raise them, but there was no estimate...existing assessment for the year 2014-15, but one for 2015-16. At least, there's no dollar amount in the box. So like the Circle K, I'm just assuming that's a new one and then there's some like Court of Fountains. I think those are the condos.
Should be on.
We have added several and I think they say new assessment. Or if they didn't have a 2014-15, they are new assessments and we added them into that assessment area. And then that is absolutely true. And some, I'll be honest with you, some were mapped last year and built last year and some were mapped several years ago and only finished last year and some were mapped several years ago. So we caught up and got them all together and they sign annexation forms when they come in and develop, so it's an automatic process by us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions before I open the public hearing? Okay? To receive public comment and consideration of a levy of the proposed annual assessment for the 2015-2016 fiscal year for landscape and lighting districts numbers 1 through 7 and 9 through 19. Is there anyone who wishes to speak or speak on City Council Resolution Number 5663? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum and bring it back to council level. Council, what's your pleasure? Mr. Silbera.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5663. That's the corrected resolution number, confirming the diagram and assessment and levying assessments for assessment districts number 1 through 7 and 9 through 19 for the 2015-16 fiscal year.
Have a second. Mrs. Lewis.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Silbera, second by Lewis to approve City Council Resolution Number 5663 as read by title. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to item 8B, public hearing. To receive public comment, consider adoption of the new update of the mobile vendor ordinance located in Title IX, Chapter III, Article 36 of the Las Bannas Municipal Code. Ordinance Number 1130. Amending Article 36, Chapter III to Title IX of the Las Bannas Municipal Code relating to mobile food vending. And we are going to go to Assistant Planner Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So tonight, we're looking at amending our existing mobile vendor ordinance and I'm just asking the council to please feel free and ask me any questions as I go along. I'm going to be giving you the presentation that we gave to the planning commission and that then they based their recommendations to the council for. So I wanted to start off with some background and how we got to where we are today. So the existing ordinance that we're operating with is Ordinance 1071 and that was adopted June 6 of 2008. And it was not just limited to...now, the trend is not just limited to hot dog carts and ice cream trucks. The mobile food vending scene is more of a foodie scene and it's becoming very popular throughout the nation. These types of vending units use social media to tell their customers where they are and where they're located and what they would be serving that day. So it's become very popular and they use the opportunity to save for a permanent restaurant, which they can establish with their clientele. So this gives them an opportunity to get their feet on the ground, get a business open, get a small business running, and establish their clientele before establishing in an actual restaurant. So our existing ordinance, I'm just going to run through what our existing ordinance is like and how it operates. So it requires a permit from the Community and Economic Development Department to operate and this is renewed annually and is non-transferable. So this is a table of all of the requirements that the ordinance today requires. And first off, they need to have a background check. This is a live scan that they complete with our police department. So this scans their fingerprints. There's...they need to provide us proof of registration. They need to show us their signage. They need to show us proof of liability for up to $1 million. They need to have a business license pending with our finance department and this is pending that the planning commission approve their vendor permit. They have to have photos of their vending unit, four photos of the front, two sides in the back. Then we need to have a copy of their health permit and they need to supply us all the names of their employees or their operators. So the planning commission is the decision-making authority for that initial permit. So that first permit comes through. It's actually a public hearing process. The public is able to weigh in, speak on the item, and the planning commission decides whether it meets the criteria of the mobile vending ordinance or not. And then each renewed permit thereafter is...the decision is based on the Community and Economic Development Director or designee and they determine whether there's been any citations that year or whether that mobile vendor is able to get a renewal for the next year. So basically, the way that the mobile vending ordinance is written today, it breaks down locations by public right-of-way or private property. So we're first gonna talk about the public right-of-way locations. This is for a period of 180 consecutive days and the type of mobile vending that would be in a public right-of-way location would be more of your ice cream truck and your push carts. And so it's 180 consecutive days during any calendar year and they cannot sell in business parks or construction zones. It's 300-foot restriction from schools, parks, playgrounds, and 100 feet from any intersection. And if they are in a residential zone, they must move every 10 minutes and they're allowed to operate from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and they cannot be within 400 feet of another vendor. And if they're in a commercial zone, they must move every two hours from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And if they're within 100 feet of residential use, they must comply with the residential zone criteria. So in the public right-of-way, if they're in a construction zone or business park, they are allowed to operate Monday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. They are not to interfere with vehicular access or pedestrian movement. They are to comply with health department requirements and they may not be located on bicycle paths, walking trails, or public parks. So this is what the municipal code says is allowed in the public right-of-way. So then it goes on to explain what is allowed and what are the criteria for private property. They must receive written permission from the property owner. They need to supply us with a site plan, so they need to submit to the city a site plan. They need to have restrooms for employees and this requirement actually comes from the Health and Safety Code. The Health and Safety Code says that they need to be 200 feet away from a restroom. And that the vending must be incidental to the primary use. The purpose of this is that they're vending on a parcel that is improved, so it has standards. It's improved with standards, so it's paved and it's not just a dirt vacant parking lot. They're limited to commercial or industrial zones and they're prohibited in the residential areas. And they may not be located on a vacant parcel, again, to require that they are on an improved lot. They must be located on pavement. And they may not degrade parking area, so if they are to be located in a parking lot, there must be sufficient parking to also accommodate the mobile vending unit, which requires two additional parking spaces in itself. They are not to interfere with vehicular access or pedestrians. They cannot be located within 600...or, excuse me, 500 feet of a similar business, which this means if it's a catering truck, they can't be within 500 feet of another restaurant. So it's to prohibit competition with brick and mortar and it must comply with health department requirements.
Stacy?
Yes.
But I was looking in your notes and it said that that's not defensible.
So our new ordinance or our new proposal is recommending that we remove that from the municipal code or the ordinance as it's written today because that is not defensible. I'm going through the existing ordinance to let you know what the lay of the land is like.
Right, right, right. But as it stands, is that correct?
Yes, you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna get into that in my presentation.
And then the alternatives?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay, all right.
So then, just to explain further about what we're working with today, there's operational requirements. They are required to display all required permits. They have to have their wheels chalked, wind stationary. The unit must be entirely self-sufficient. There must be no discharge of waste. They must maintain site in a safe and clean condition. They are not allowed to have any furniture, so anybody with picnic tables, umbrellas, those types of things, that is not permitted. They must meet applicable building code and public safety requirements. There is no exterior storage allowed, and the amplification of music is limited. It's really only limited and solely allowed for the ice cream trucks. It's appropriate trash containment. They must keep their sites clean and there's no loitering that's enforced. So the planning commission, when this item was brought before the planning commission, we went through basically this same presentation and we went through the issues that we are experiencing right now with our existing ordinance and we, as a staff, presented alternatives and they went through the alternatives that they recommended for the city council. So I'm gonna go through that as well. So we presented a comprehensive analysis and then the planning commission made a recommendation to the city council. So first off, we have issue number one. And this is an issue that we have with our existing ordinance as it is today. This issues with the concentration of mobile vendors located on private property. This does not allow for mobile vending to be located less than 500 feet from a similar business. So like I said, a catering truck would not be able to be 500 feet from a restaurant. The issue with that is that we found that this is an unlawful restriction. It's been challenged down in San Diego. There's a case that was challenged and what the courts decided was that it was not...if it's not related to public health, welfare, and safety, it is not a lawful restriction. And when we did our research on the original ordinance, as it was written within the minutes, there was a lot of discussion and debate on preserving brick and mortar businesses. So with discussions with our city attorney, we felt that we needed to keep the focus on public welfare, public health, safety, and welfare and to put that restriction was unlawful and we needed to readjust that. So like I said, there was a successful challenge protecting...that was intended to protect brick and mortar and it resulted in limited locations for mobile vendors to operate. So this particular restriction puts a lot of restrictions...a lot of limitations on mobile vending as it is today. And I'm gonna show you, there's the next slide. There are currently three mobile vending units operating and it's because of that strict 500-foot restriction. They're pinpointed for you in red right now where they're located in the city on that aerial for you. It's very difficult, pretty much on Pacheco, there's a restaurant every block. So to get around that 500-foot restriction is very difficult. There's really no other purpose than, in our findings historically, than to preserve the brick and mortar businesses, which we feel would be unlawful if we were challenged in court. So going on through issue number one, which is on the concentration of mobile vending units, we have several alternatives that staff has come up with. And first is to make no changes. Keep the ordinance the way it is and keep the concentration, the restriction of the 500-foot radius as it is today. Or we could repeal the concentration limitation and let the market dictate the total number. We could create zones within the city and limit the number of mobile vendors in a particular zone without reference to similar business. So that would limit the concentration, but more on a safety perspective. Or limit the total number of permits for vendors without reference to similar business. Or we can allow more than one mobile vendor per parcel depending on the size. And these that are highlighted in yellow are the alternatives that the planning commission recommended for approval to the city council. And they recommended to repeal the concentration limitation altogether and let the market dictate. And then also to allow more than one mobile vending unit per parcel depending on the size. And so a size has been drafted up into the proposed ordinance. I believe it's about 1,200 square feet. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Vaughn. But it was basically, using Food for Less as an example, it's a very large shopping center and you could have one mobile vending unit on one end of the shopping center and possibly another one at the other end. So this was not to prohibit to have multiple units on one parcel. So it needed to meet a size criteria and the planning commission agreed with that. So that's what we proposed moving forward with our language in our draft ordinance. So issue number two, this particular issue... This particular issue, right now, is that the city has no process or provision for one-day occasional pop-up-type mobile vending. So what this is, is that we're not conducive to specialty-type mobile vendors. An example is the cupcake lady. The cupcake lady came to Los Banas, and this type of use is just a flash-type, one-day sale for two hours at a private parking lot. The way that the mobile vending ordinance is written, it doesn't allow for the easy accessibility of just a one-day type permit. They have to go through a public hearing process, has to go before the planning commission, and it's in a permanent location. And that wasn't really conducive to what they were asking to do. They were asking to just be here one time for, at this private property, just for two hours for a specialty-type thing. So with that, staff came back and thought, okay, what could we do to provide an alternative?
Stacy, the current, in this, in this alternative, you're going to get to the alternatives, or the preferred alternatives. So if I had a private party at my house and wanted to call the cupcake lady to come there, that's illegal as it is right now?
As it's written right now. And actually, don't show that as an issue, but we've written that into the new ordinance as an exception. So it would be an exception now in a residential area if you have a private property, private party, and they're not vending. So if a mobile vending unit is not vending, and it's just for private use, it is going to be an exception, Mr. Vaughn.
There's two considerations there. First of all, there's no mobile vending on private property in a residential zone, period. So what you're indicating couldn't happen to begin with. If it, they would have to be in a commercial area, and if they wanted to do that, they'd have to go through the full process for a year-long permit that requires a public hearing and so on and so forth. So I don't know. We drafted up a clause in the ordinance to allow for a temporary over-the-counter, one-day type permit for that, for a commercial use such as someone wanting to do it, say, at a business location. And in addition to that, we made an exception for the circumstance you're talking about in a residential area, when it's fully contained on the residential lot, and they're not selling anything, but they're essentially catering like a party. Because we've understood that there are a number of those that are actually happening now. And so we put some restrictions in the exception part of this to allow for that without any type of permitting.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Stacy, so does that mean that a mobile vendor could come in from out of the area if we allowed these one-day permits? And if a person had a site conducive to like 1,200 square feet, square feet or whatever, they could come in and they could sell a product if there were no space limitation or distance limitations? And then leave town?
Well, part of the alternatives that we're providing for you is an over-the-counter admin permit. So they would still have to have a business license, and they would still need a permit. They wouldn't just be able to have a splash sale real quickly and then leave. They still have to have a bit of a process, but it's not the same full process that it's a public hearing, it's the planning commission, it's waiting to get on an agenda that's carried out. It would be an over-the-counter same-day type of permit. But there would be restrictions and criteria that they would need to meet, and that's why it's an over-the-counter. We're hoping for an over-the-counter type of permit. So I'll go through those alternatives, so you can see what I'm talking about.
I know, but my point exactly, that we could have mobile vendors coming in from outside the area. Come in, get their business license, set it up, have their sale for however long that they want, and leave. And then the vendors that are here, I'm not sure we're doing them justice, but I'll listen to the presentation. Let's go on.
Just so you understand, it would be limited to one day in any given week, and it would be limited to six times during the calendar year. So it's really, it's really aiming towards someone who's maybe more regionalized and not, not set up in Los Banas, who has a specialty-type mobile vending, but wants to kind of move around the area. So, but we wanted them to go through a, or this planning commission wanted them to go through a permitting process.
Okay. So the first alternative is to make no changes. The second was to allow an over-the-counter same-day admin permit process for a limited duration. And so what we've written into the ordinance is, as Mr. Vaughn explained, it's for a one-day, six-times-a-year type of permit. Or to designate a public area, such as Pacheco Park or Henry Miller Plaza, for a limited duration or occasional vending through an over-the-counter same-day admin permit, which would be, they would need to follow the established criteria. Or to consider a same process for holiday or flower-and-balloon sales. So out of this, what the planning commission recommended was two alternatives, that we would allow for an over-the-counter same-day admin permit process for a limited duration, and that we would designate a public area, which is not permitted at all right now, such as Pacheco Park and Henry Miller Plaza, for a limited duration or occasional vending through an over-the-counter same-day admin permit. What seems to be a really big trend right now with these mobile food vendors is that they, they have these gourmet trucks, and they'll travel through your town, but they'll only be there for a short period of time. And they, it's a foodie scene that is happening all up and down California, and we see this happening in lots of other cities. But as our code is written right now, we wouldn't be able to allow those types of gourmet trucks to even visit our town. They wouldn't be able to stop and vend at all. But we thought it would be possibly, and the planning commission agree, that it would be an appropriate location to possibly do this at Pacheco Park or Henry Miller Plaza for a one-day type of special, for a couple of hours type of special event, that they would be able to do that in over-the-counter same-day admin permit for something really minor that they would be proposing. So those were the recommendations by the planning commission. Any questions on those? Okay?
Would someone who had a 180-day permit, then would they need to obtain a one-day permit if they wanted to join those trucks, if they already had a 180-day permit to vend here in Los Banas? Would they have to, would they have to buy another permit to vend one day in a special event?
The 180-day type permits are the ice cream trucks, and they're on the public right-of-way. This type of event, we're looking at more of not so much an ice cream truck, but an actual food vendor. And the ice cream trucks, they can't be at a park. So this would be, this would be more specialized, more specialized type of catering truck than your average ice cream-type truck. I think we're trying to distinguish the two uses.
Maybe I'm not explaining myself correctly, then. The one on G Street that's there permanently every day?
That's every day, 365 days, so not 180 days.
Okay, or let's go with 365 days, then. Would they have to buy a separate permit to join these other foodie guys?
It would be an over-the-counter admin permit.
So they have to purchase one?
Because they're allowed to vend at G Street, at that location, that particular spot only.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So issue number three, that the city does not currently inspect mobile vending units for fire safety concerns. We currently rely just on Merced County Environmental Health for inspections of these mobile units. And really, what Merced County Environmental Health is doing is, their focus is purely on sanitation. So with this, we feel that we need to look at equipment safety. We've spoken with our fire department, with our fire chief, on achieving this. Basically, some background, Mr. Vaughn and I saw an article, we actually watched a video, it was in Philadelphia. This food truck had a leak, apparently had a leak, and there was an open flame, and the truck just went up in flames. So that, that gave us some great concern, that we weren't providing any of this type of equipment safety on our trucks right now. And speaking with Steve, he's actually personally witnessed this in Stockton at a gas station. The mobile vendor went inside, thank God, to grab a soda or something like that, and there was a leak, and next to an open flame, went up and spoke, you know. So big, big safety issue with that if we don't address it. So in working with the fire department, they do have a multi-gas detectors to determine leaks. So we feel that we would be able to address this, providing some sort of inspection for that process. So we're proposing some alternatives for this issue. The first would be to make no change, so not require a fire safety inspection. Or amend the ordinance to require a fire inspection of each mobile vending unit using gas flame, and charge the appropriate fee for that, for the fire department to make that check. So this would not apply to the ice cream trucks, or even possibly to the cupcake lady. She doesn't bake any of her cupcakes on her truck. This would only apply to the catering trucks that do have an open flame and that are preparing food. And then the other alternative is to consider possible restrictions of the use of a gas flame near other combustible materials. And this would be really for the use near, say, a gas station, someplace where there is combustible material nearby. So the planning commission recommended that we amend the ordinance to require a fire safety inspection, and that we also consider restrictions of the use of a gas flame near other combustible materials. So we've written those alternatives into the ordinance, and the restrictions of the use near other combustible materials, that would be based on, their location would be based on the approval of the fire chief. So they would need to be, if they wanted to be near a gas station, they needed to be at a distance seen deemable, that would be appropriate away from a fire sta, excuse me, a gas station.
Okay, Stacy, really quick. And I know we spoke earlier, and I just want to share what some of my concerns were on this particular issue is. You know, in the first part of the issue, you bring up that the city currently relies on Merced County Environmental Health Department to do the inspection of the mobile vendors. I myself want to err on the side of caution, but what I don't want to do is duplicate services. So if, if the county health department is already inspecting these units for not only food safety, but fire safety, is it necessary to have the fire department come in and duplicate those services?
Sure. So I do, I did contact the health department and received a checklist of the items that they go through when they inspect each of the mobile vending units. And Tim, as well as his department, also spoke with them, and I received the same checklist, Mason received the checklist, same checklist that I did. And we did want to ensure that we weren't duplicating our processes. Purely what the health department does is a pure focus on sanitation and sanitation only. They're not looking at equipment or the safety of the truck. They're just looking at food preparation, and I'm sure our fire chief can step in here.
Just wanted to add, Councilmember Severa, is that we currently do this inspection on all the mobile vendors that are at the May Day Fair during our spring fair. This isn't anything new to us. And during that fair, the health department also comes in and does their inspection. We're primarily going to focus on the propane tanks that are installed in the vehicle, make sure that they're secure, make sure that they've been hydrostatically tested in the period of time. The fire suppression systems in the hood, which the county does not check to make sure they've been serviced correctly, coming from them. They assure that they're working and are able to ventilate, but the suppression system, they don't check. Words from their mouth today was if they see a fire extinguisher that hadn't been serviced, they recommend that it does get serviced. In this case, we will do all those, as well as use a multi-gas detector that we use for confined space entry, that has flammability capabilities, and are able to detect any propane that might be in the, in the trailer at the time. We spoke to the billing department about that, talked a little bit about pressure testing, the piping to the propane system. And it's going to be a little bit more extensive and additional cost to the vendor. I think that we can do it very safely with our gas detector.
Very good. So I think that answers all my questions. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't duplicating a service that was already being provided.
Absolutely. Okay. So on to issue number four. This issue is that background checks are required for all mobile vending units. So this is regardless if you're selling to children or not. So if you're an ice cream vendor, it's definitely warranted. If you're targeting children, we understand the background of the need, the necessity for background checks. But it requires even for a catering truck to also have background checks as a requirement. So it's for all mobile vendors, regardless of their vending type. And the discussion that we had at a staff level was that, well, when you go to McDonald's, how do you know that, that, at a fast-food restaurant, how do you know that that person selling you that hamburger went through a background check? So why are we discriminating against mobile vending units? So that was the thought behind that. So we proposed some alternatives to the planning commission. It was to make no change, or to require criminal background checks on mobile vending, selling novelties and ice cream or other products directed directly towards children. And the planning commission said to make no changes, to require background checks regardless of the mobile vending unit. This was an assurance, to just make sure that people out there vending, period, didn't have any suspicious background history, that they should not be vending out, out in the public. So issue number five, any questions?
Who makes that determination? Is it strictly?
Our police chief does.
Chief does?
Yes, so those live scans go through the Department of Justice and the FBI, and he gets the reports back and then determines, because it is private information, he determines whether it is safe for them to vend or not, and then he gives the Community and Economic Development Department clearance on those individuals.
Okay, very good.
So every push cart that we see around town, that person has been live-scanned?
Yes. And each person is also required to have an identification card from the city. We actually work with the finance department to coordinate that with the business license. So each individual has that ID card that says, you know, I have a vendor permit with the city of Los Banas. And that's also our way of knowing they've met all the criteria, they've done everything they need to do, and they've passed their background check.
So the hours for push carts, again, are what?
In the public right-of-way, it is from, I know they need to stop vending at 7:00 p.m. I believe it's 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Okay.
In the public right-of-way.
Certain times of the year, it's dark at 5:00 o'clock.
Yeah.
And are they required to have some kind of reflectors or lights or something on these push carts, so if they're in the public right-of-way, they don't get hurt?
You know, we don't have a requirement right now, as the ordinance is written. Most of them voluntarily wear that themselves, but it's not a requirement of the ordinance.
Okay.
So it's a possibility.
All right.
That we can write that in, definitely.
Okay.
So issue number five is that there's 180-day limitation for vendors in the public right-of-way. And they cannot vend more than 180 consecutive days during the calendar year. And we've had, I do have some mobile vendors that are here that did speak at the public hearing with the planning commission. And I'm sure during, when the public hearing is open, they will come and comment as well. But the comments that we heard from these mobile vendors is that they are paying insurance and vehicle registration on their trucks for the full 365 days out of the year, but they're only allowed to vend half of the year. And for most of them, this is their livelihood, and they're only able to operate half of the year. They also have to have a business license for the entire year. They're not just allowed to have it for half the year. And so they're paying that same price according as to the statements that they made, and they feel that they should be allowed to operate all year long. And currently, we do have some vendors that will use their truck for 180 days out of the year, and then will have a relative get another mobile vending, mobile vendor permit, and then operate the other 180 days of the year. So it's really, they found a loophole in the code, and they're able to operate, some of them are operating 365 days out of the year anyways. So we felt that it would be fair to just eliminate this restriction altogether.
I might just add to that, the case that Stacy was talking about in terms of the brick-and-mortar limitations, also talked about something along the lines of this. And it is that the, in the public right-of-way, it's really a statewide concern, and the local concern is preempted by the statewide concern in terms of traveling on the, traveling and vending in the public right-aways. And you really have to be, your restrictions have to go to public, potentially public safety and welfare. So if you, we, Stacy and I were, while we couldn't find any cases that dealt with this, because I don't think these are very common, we're having a hard time... I don't think these are very common, we're having a hard time finding a rationale for the 180-day limitation that related to public safety. And so that was one of the reasons why we thought it might be appropriate, in addition to the other reasons that she mentioned, to not limit it to 180 consecutive days just for the public right-of-way vendors.
Okay. So we have several, a couple of alternatives for you. First, make no change. And the next alternative is to repeal the 100-day, 180-day limitation. And the planning commission recommended that we repeal this 180-day limitation. So the last issue that we have is issue number six. And this is vending in the public right-of-way and/or public property. So the ordinance as it is written now does not allow mobile vendors in the public right-of-way to stop or park longer than 10 minutes. And this prohibits 300 feet from public parks, schools, and churches. So with that, there were some alternatives proposed. And this was to make no changes or designate a public area such as Pacheco Park or Henry Miller Plaza for a limited duration through an over-the-counter admin permit, which we previously talked about, kind of with those pop-up type flash sales. And to allow mobile vending under the umbrella of a special event, so Mother's Day in the park or, say, a street fair, something like that. As it is today, that mobile vending unit technically would not be able to operate in those types of settings. Or to allow mobile vending downtown on the weekends. So those were the alternatives that staff suggested. The planning commission chose two out of those, to designate a public area such as Pacheco Park or Henry Miller Plaza, or to allow mobile vending under an umbrella of a special event. They did debate quite heavily about allowing mobile vending downtown on the weekends. But then with further discussion, decided to eliminate that alternative toward, to the plan, or, excuse me, to the city council. So those are all of the alternatives and all of the issues that we have before you tonight. So we have a recommendation to introduce ordinance number 1130, amending the mobile vendor ordinance as set forth in Title IX, Chapter III, Article 36 of the Los Banos Municipal Code. Or we can continue our discussion, open the public hearing, and continue this item to a date certain.
Stacy, the Pacheco Park or Henry Miller Plaza, how many vendors would be along Pacheco or Henry Miller Park?
Well, it would determine on the size of the trucks and how many trucks we could fit there. We didn't have a limitation on how many can actually be there, but there's a limitation to where specifically they need to be located. On Pacheco Park, they would need to be on the driveway off of Pacheco. So they wouldn't be allowed to be on 7th Street or at the back end of the park off of Washington Avenue. They would need to be facing the park, open-sided, up against the park, against the curb there. So they're limited to their location of where they could be. At Henry Miller Plaza, the same scenario essentially. They need to be facing the park, up against the sidewalk there. And it's, trucks vary in size. Some trucks are larger than others. And I know Mr. Vaughn has a comment.
Yeah. Currently, there's no vending in the public parks, and there's no vending in the public right-of-way, other than the mobile vendors that are basically mobile and keep moving and can park, legally park. So we thought, in conjunction with the same-day permit, that it might be an idea to actually designate a place in the public area where the city has a little bit more control over, which is that lane along Pacheco Park. And that permit would be through an over-the-counter permit. So the number of them and the location of them can be basically metered by the Economic and Community Development Department as those permits come in. So it wouldn't be something where you would see one, the same one there, 365 days a year.
Right. But, I mean, we have people traveling through town all the time. And this council and other councils have worked hard to make sure that the landscape and what people view as they go through is very important. And if we allowed a number of trucks to be parked and there wasn't visible access to the park or Henry Miller Plaza, that would kind of bother me. And so, you know, I'm asking these specific questions because if, whatever we decide, we're going to have to live with this. So that's just one of my questions. Ms. Lewis?
Thank you. Stacy, I have a series of questions. And just on the comment that the mayor was making, for me personally, I kind of want to raise the bar of what our city is doing and how it looks and, you know, how the businesses conduct themselves. In regards to issue number one, the 500-foot restriction, and the planning commission is recommending that that be done away with, I went online and looked at some other cities within the state of California. And there's a particular website called mobilefoodnews.com. And I went there and read an article on the city of Sacramento. They had a four-month, I'm sorry, a four-year discussion with brick and mortar and how their businesses would be affected by mobile vendors being able to park, you know, X amount of feet close to whatever that brick and mortar business would be. And it looks like the last article that was written on that particular decision is that the council in Sacramento, of course, they recommended that there be, the area be kept trash-free, and that the mobile vendors would be required to have hand washing for the employees, which is in our ordinance, and that trucks must be parked at least 50 feet from an intersection. I think ours is 100. And that they had to be 400 feet from other vendors and 100 feet from restaurants. So I guess I'm a little bit concerned about the challenge that came up in San Diego, whether it's legislative law now or if it's, you know, a recommendation, because now we have our capital city that has recommended that these vendoring trucks not be that close to the brick and mortar. It's like having a compromise, because, you know, some, we don't, I don't know if we have any brick and mortar businesses here tonight, but as things normally go, people don't start complaining until after the fact. And, well, I, you know, I didn't realize it, or I didn't know about what was happening. And then we're in a situation where we've set precedent for something and we've got a group of businesses that are concerned. Now, our downtown businesses seem to be protected, but we've got Pacheco and other areas that we, as a council, have to be concerned about. Just because they're not here, we still have to protect them as well. Excuse me. Also, in some of the other, let me see. I think there was a proposal for multiple vendors to be on private property. And some of the other sites that I visited required that there be ADA parking and that there be X amount of parking spaces for the public to park in. And also that, you know, there'd be landscaping and not just have a mobile vendor parking on a, you know, a dirt lot or just concrete, that the bar is being raised again so that if they're going to be here on a regular basis, there needs to be some beautification around the area that they're parked on. Number six, when we were talking about using public parks for this possible vending, the mayor had brought up an issue about vendors being on their permanent lots or wherever they're located, and then pulling a permit to be in this area for, I guess, if it goes through, it would be X amount of times per year. But what prohibits them from getting a relative to do the same thing that they're doing now is that relative pulling a permit and vending on the site. And we're still at the same point again. We have the same family, multiple members in that family vending to bypass what the city ordinance is. And we don't even have a whole harmless agreement that I saw in our code to even protect us if the city went for something like that. I could see maybe if there was a special event coming through town, and you had mentioned that earlier, where vendors kind of had an event that would come through town and want to do something special. And certainly, I would like to see a variety of different kinds of food vending in our city to allow people to have that opportunity of tasting other cuisines. But I just, you know, I have concern about just allowing vendors to want to be on our, at Pacheco Park or at Henry Miller Park, just for the sake of having another spot to venue. Those are kind of some of the premier spots that we have here in our city. And if we're going to do anything like that, it really should be for designated special event or for special days, like when we do Mother's Day or Father's Day of the park. Or if a group of vendors are coming from Southern California and want to stop in Los Banos and present some really unusual cuisines to our community. Let's see if I have something else here. So I'll, I think Mr. Vaughn wants to address my first concern. I'll look at my notes here while he's addressing that.
Stacy, before, is it possible to, I mean, some of the things that I'm hearing, I'm concerned. And you had mentioned one of the alternatives is continue this to a date certain, so we can answer more questions. Is it possible to get like a Google Map scenario of the park, of the plaza, show us how the outline of the trucks would be, what the traffic flow, the path would be for cars entering on the highway, cars exiting, and come up with a recommendation of the number of trucks that you think that should go there, so it wouldn't blot the landscape to a point that, you know, we're not, our park is invisible? So, Mr. Vaughn?
Before you let him go, Mr. Mayor, I'll just say this other thing. I pulled up the city of Davis and Hollister, and they do have zones that they allow vending in, which are commercial zones. Davis has planned division, planning division, let me see, right here. Commercial zones, industrial zones, planned development, this requires a permit. Office zones, conditional permits are like auto centers, commercial services, commercial mixed uses, and industrial administrative and research, which I don't think we have at this particular time. And Hollister as well requires permits, requires certain areas for vending, like light industrial, industrial parks, airport, and it's mostly industrial areas. And what I'm hearing is that because there is concern about somewhat discrimination of vendors versus brick and mortar, we don't have zoning, particularly in Los Banos, where we can require vendor zone, vendor operation. So that's another alternative that we could look at.
Yeah. That was an alternative that staff presented to the planning commission, and they
They rejected it.
They decided that the market would dictate the amount. But we had said that we could justify that as a health and safety measure and put zones with the restriction of how many are in each zone.
I would be more in favor of something like that, because it gives the city more control about how it wants to look and how aesthetically, and that's no downtrodden or anything on a vendor, it's just that, you know, you can end up having a whole bunch of vending products up and down your commercial area on Pacheco. And again, right now, we're protecting downtown. But there's nothing to say at this point, if it's, this council rejects it, as to where a vendor can go. And that could be anywhere. So, okay, thank you.
Mr. Vaughn?
Mrs. Lewis brought up a lot of issues, and they're not all connected, so I'll try to address them from the legal standpoint, but let Stacy address them from the planning standpoint. In terms of the protecting brick and mortar, in terms of the distances away from where a mobile vendor can be located, we need to understand that what we're talking about is locations on private property. So if you, if you read the ordinance carefully, the ordinance is broken into vending on private property, and it's broken into vending on public right-of-way, which are streets and parks and public properties. The 500-foot restriction in our current ordinance only deals with private property locations. So for instance, Stacy showed you the map. If you want to, if you want to vend on a private property in the commercial zone, because it's only allowed in the commercial zone, then you have to be 500 feet away from a brick and mortar-like establishment such as a restaurant. So for instance, if you wanted to locate in the Food for Less Shopping Center, you probably could not, because there are other brick and mortar restaurants within the Food for Less Shopping Center, and you would be within 500 feet of those establishments on private property. The Sacramento case that I think you're talking about is dealing with, they do allow for vending to occur in the public right-of-way for legally parked areas. So if I want to vend, I don't have to vend from private property. I can vend from a legal parking space in the downtown Sacramento area, as long as I'm parked legally and meet other requirements. The safety issue comes, I was reading about cases like that, is the traffic that's generated by someone parking a mobile vending unit in a downtown area near other food establishments and other establishments that are attracting lots of people, lots of traffic, lots of foot traffic, and lots of outdoor dining. And so I think their restrictions are more related to health and safety than what we're talking about. What we're talking about is a permanent location in a commercial area where we don't have those same types of concerns necessarily. And the only criteria that we've used to develop this is, we're not going to allow you to be near a brick and mortar business of the same, doing the same type of business, which is, in my opinion, not, has nothing to do with safety and is more to do with protecting the business of the restaurant brick and mortar operator. And that's where I think the challenge comes through. And that's, there are a number of cases in Southern California talking exactly about those types of restrictions. When the restrictions are solely based on, we want to protect the McDonald's of the world, the mom-and-pop restaurants of the world, by not allowing someone to have a mobile vending unit come in on a piece of private property next door, whatever, because we want to protect their business, that's not the basis on which you can do that. You can only do that for, in my view, general public health and safety and welfare-type restrictions. So in Sacramento, I think they're talking about those restrictions dealing with vending going on in the public street, near other restaurants and openings to other restaurants where the traffic and the foot traffic is different. So I think that's, those are the, those are the two cases I see a lot of. It's the restaurant owner complaining that a mobile vendor pulls up to his front door where all his customers are sitting and eating and starts vending from a legally parked parking space and wants some room between him and the vendor. And if you can relate it to the safety of pedestrian traffic and also vehicular traffic, you can do it. But we're suggesting where it's a private property, that that same concern isn't there, number one. So that's the difference between what we're talking about.
If it's a private commercial property, how does that, how do you determine? If it's a private commercial property, how does that, how do you determine, how do you designate commercial and how do you designate private?
If you're commercially, well, if you're a piece of private property in a commercial zone, you're, you are allowed to have a mobile vendor on your property, except it can't be 500 feet from another like business currently, right now. So right now, in the City of Los Banos, you can vend on private property in the industrial zones, in the commercial zones of the city. You cannot vend from private property within the residential zones. Okay, so you can do all of those things. So the example of you can't, we're protecting downtown, isn't quite true because a mobile vendor could drive through downtown and vend if they wanted to. A mobile vendor could park in a legal parking space as long as they're parked legally and meeting all requirements, they can vend from a legal parking space.
Do they take up two parking spaces?
No.
Okay. No problem.
So we haven't really put in a restriction, other than they got to move every 10 minutes.
10 minutes, yeah.
And that restriction has also been challenged and sometimes successfully. So we're not really dealing with that challenge in this ordinance. The 500-foot restriction that we're talking about in this ordinance only deals with private property in commercial zones and not allowing someone to park a mobile vending unit on a commercially, commercial zone that meets every other requirement of our code but happens to be across the street from Carlo's Restaurant, for instance. So that's what we're talking about. And so when we analyzed that, we had a hard time relating that to public health, welfare, and safety, as opposed to when they're vending from a street or a sidewalk. Some cities allow mobile vendors to street, vend from the sidewalk with those push carts. And so that's, there's the traffic issue, pedestrian issue. We want you 100 feet away from an intersection. We want you 100 feet away from the opening of another restaurant or bar type thing. Those are when you see those types of restrictions. And we're talking about something different here.
We need to get this right. Stacy, is there any urgency to introduce this tonight? Because I've heard a lot of questions. And I, I mean, there's still, there's no answers. I'd like to see the maps of how we locate it, what the landscape is going to look like. Is there any urgency to introduce this tonight?
I know from the public right-of-way mobile vendors, they do have an urgency in terms of if the council does not decide to go with the, limiting the 180-day restriction. If you decide to remove that completely from the code, then, I mean, there's two readings, then it takes 30 days for the ordinance to become effective. So even if we were to, if the council were tonight to introduce the ordinance, waive the first reading, then the second meeting, also adopt the ordinance, it would still be not until July 17th that the ordinance would become effective. We do have mobile vendors, I believe in August, Mr. Hernandez, your, his 180 days expire. And so that was a conversation that he did have with the Planning Commission, so they felt to continue the process and to move forward with the city council. But if that should be your decision, then we would, we would come back.
Well, I have two more questions. Mrs. Lewis?
Yeah, for me, I need to have more clarification and definitive definition of what Mr. Vaughn was talking about based on how it was laid out today. Because what was presented to us today showed what we have on our books and what the Planning Commission recommended. But there's, you know, there still needs to be clarity in my mind how this whole thing is separated out. So, you know, I hear what he's saying, but I need to be able to visibly see it and separate it out of my mind so that I'm making a clear, concise decision for the public, not only for these mobile vendors, but for all of our other businesses here in town as well. You know, I can't just speak for the people that are before us tonight, the mobile vendors. I feel like as a council person, I need to be concerned about all the business people who this may affect. So it's just me that I need to make sure that I'm clear on this and that if there's some laws that are governing certain things, then we need to have that information in the packet so we can read it all rather than just, you know, the information that you're presenting to us. Because to regurgitate all of this that's been given to us tonight is a lot to make a final decision on. But I didn't have all of that in writing. And for me to have to go online and try to find things from various cities and, you know, just others, cities and counties out of the state of California is a lot to do to make it comparative to what some court may have decided or what may be an issue here in the state of California. So I'm just saying for myself, I want to, I want to see more material in writing so that I can make a clear decision for everyone involved.
Mr. Silbera?
I guess, for me, I just have a couple of things. Number one, I agree with all of the Planning Commission's recommendations, except for on number six. I don't know that I'm comfortable, Stacy, with, I'm comfortable with designating like Pacheco Park and Henry Miller Plaza, not on an everyday basis, as a public right-of-way to vend from. I'm okay with designating those areas for special occasions, you know, and I think that the one-day over-the-counter permit takes care of that. You guys are going to determine what those special occasions are, and especially under the umbrella of a special event such as Mother's Day in the park or Father's Day in the park, or maybe even movie night at Henry Miller Plaza. As far as opening them up, that they can come and apply for that on any given day that they want to, I don't know if I'm ready to do that for Pacheco Park and Henry Miller Plaza. So I myself could move forward tonight with saying yes to all of the, and obviously, we still have to hear from the public, but as I read it now, I'm comfortable with the recommendations, except for, you know, number six. The other thing I want to say is, is, you know, I think it's imperative as a council person, when you get your packets, is make phone calls to your staff people. Because I know the questions that I had on number three with the fire department issue, I asked those questions again tonight so the public has the benefit of hearing what my questions were. But I made those phone calls to give staff some time to try to get me the information back so that we all have the answers to those questions. So that's just my thoughts on it.
Normally, I would agree with you, but, okay.
I'm sorry how that came about.
Okay. And a number of questions came up tonight that I didn't even think of, so. Mr. Faria?
Oh, a couple of questions, actually, I have three. You mentioned one vendor. How many vendors have we had? Have we had a number of vendors, five, 10, 20, expressing us to amend, asking us to amend this?
So I have public mobile vendors here. I have these folks here, which they'll come up to when the public hearing is open. They're limited right now because of the 500-foot restriction. They're not able to vend in Los Banos period. And I have had countless, so the cupcake lady, they're waiting for us to amend our ordinance. They were going to come tonight, but unfortunately, were detained. They're from Turlock. And I've had countless, I would say, in the range of probably 20 or so vendors over the years since this has been in place, where I've had to churn away because the agreements that they've had in place with the landowners, private property owners, it's within the 500-foot restriction is usually what determines whether they can operate or not. And that's usually the biggest restriction.
Okay. And the next question I have, has there been any discussion of the cost of that one-day permit?
No, we have not discussed that. That would be also brought before you with a separate resolution. It would just be purely a cost recovery on what it would take for time for staff to do that over-the-counter permit, probably an hour or so for just staff to determine whether it meets all the criteria, whether they meet all the criteria with their actual vending unit, have their health permit, have their vehicle registration, all those types of things, and then determine whether that site would be appropriate or not.
Okay, and then, thank you. And the third question, do we have any provision for if there's a special event being done for-
Yes.
Whatever it happens to be, that a mobile vendor would show up, who hadn't paid to participate in that special event? We have a provision for that. Essentially, can't crash the party.
Yes, so they're not allowed actually to mobile vend if they're not a part of that special event. And it's actually written in the code that we need to receive approval from our Public Works Director on the use of the park, for instance, in that special event. So there's a provision in there that they are not allowed to vend and crush the party with to eliminate that type of scenario.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Stacy, was there any discussion as to the appearance of the mobile vendor and what they would look like?
And the actual truck. So the way that the ordinance is actually written today, that is a criteria and not necessarily on that the Planning Commission has any discretion on the way that it looks. But they're required to provide four photos, the front, the sides, and the back. So the Planning Commission can take a look at that, look at the signage that's always placed on the truck, and determine whether that's sufficient, whether it's sufficient labeling. And that is a part of the Planning Commission's review process.
Yeah. I want to be very clear, I'm not saying I'm against anything, I'm just looking for more information. Okay. Why don't we go to the public hearing? And is there anyone who would like to speak or to receive public comment in consideration of adoption of new update to the mobile vendor ordinance located in Title IX, Chapter Three, Article 36 of the Los Banos Municipal Code? Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item?
My name is Israel Hernandez, and Rainbow Ice Cream. We are in the ready for meeting for this one to try to extend it another 180 days for the permit. Because I told Stacy, we paid insurance for four year, we pay the registered card and then the seat permit, and then we want to see if it's possible we can get, you know, approval. I don't know how impossible is separate the ice cream truck permit to the truck truck, you know, the taco truck. Because I know there's a lot, a lot more information you want for the truck truck, and then it's a little hard for us to come in every time we have the meeting to try to get that, another 180 days to permit to stand there. Any question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
We, we're from Dos Palos, but we plan on opening our business here in Los Banos. And we talked to Stacy about the catering truck. And the ordinance is the 500-feet distance. We've been having a difficult time finding a location. And not only that, it's the private property, the owners that give you the permit. I mean, right now, we have like about two months that we've been waiting for the signature for the owner to give, you know, give us permit there. And it's been very hard for us to establish that right now, and that's why we're here to see if we could get that, you know, that kind of help.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, of her, of her? Yes. Could you come back to the microphone, please?
You said there was, you were having difficulty getting a signature from the owner of the land?
Yes, because it's one of the requirements from our, the planning department, to get the owner's signature, not the one that's leasing.
But it has nothing to do with you being able to put your vending business there? It's just the signature you're waiting for?
No, well, we have other requirements already in place. The only thing that's keeping us from opening our business here is that.
The signature of the owner?
Yes, because that's one of the requirements.
Okay, all right.
But that wouldn't change, would it?
No, but because she's having this difficulty, she's not able to look for another site. This is really one of the only sites that meets that 500-foot restriction. She's trying to work with the property owner because this is really her last hope, but the property owner knows this and is, it's not quite that easy to work with. So she has been, it's been several months.
We've been looking around also in other locations, which it's impossible to get someone to let us operate there. And also, and the location that we just have the signature is actually a certain location there at the location that we could park. And that is not open to park anywhere else in that same location because of the 500-feet.
Yeah, there was just a small window where they would even be allowed to be located on that private property to meet the restriction.
And it's not too noticeable, actually, for people to see us there, but it's something. I mean, that would help.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening. Bob Reister, Los Banos. Where I reside at, I sometimes see ice cream trucks coming through, sometimes three times in a day, different vendors. And they're doing their job, and I don't have a problem with that, except for on occasion, there is one, the Satoris were being heard three blocks away. And then when they do stop just down the street, their megaphone is just sitting there blaring. I've challenged this person a couple of times over the past couple of years, saying, "Look, can you please just turn this thing down?" It is my understanding that there is a code that tells them that they are required to do this, that when they're stopped, to turn down the microphone so they're not disturbing the residents where they're just blaring it out. And I know and understand you can only have so much control, but the problem that I see is when I've communicated this with the authorities, the best thing, option they can do is say, "Well, can you get a picture of the truck and, you know, so we can..." Well, you know, I don't think I need to get a picture of a truck. What I need to do is, I feel what I need to do is, when you're dealing with this, is look into the situation where, if they're going to have a business license, not just a piece of paper showing the license where I have to actually walk up and try to find it and read that little thing, put a big sticker, certain size, that it can be seen at a distance, just like they do with the big rig trucks. So if there is a situation, then I can, want to be able to report, I can describe the truck, show the license number. If you're the city, something to look forward to and maybe send a letter of concern with that, because this person has twice now says, "Well, I didn't know about that." So he's playing dumb. But I think that the city was to do this. My concern here is a city license number. If it's there, it should be just like on the big trucks. They get a license, they put on there, it's a transport license. Why can't we do that with the mobile vendors? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum and bring it back to council level. Do I have a motion? Mr. Faria?
It seems to be a lot of questions left that we'd like answered, and frankly, this has been a whirlwind week for a lot of us, for a number of reasons. And I would, I would like to move to continue ordinance, the ordinance number 1130, to our next council meeting, which would be June 17th.
I have a motion to continue till June 17th, and, okay, let's, do I have a second? Mrs. Lewis?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. It's a motion by Mr. Faria, second by Mrs. Lewis, that the item number 8A1, City Council Resolution Number 5663, confirming, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. All right, ordinance number 8B1, ordinance number 1130, amending Article 36, Chapter Three to Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code relating to mobile food vending, vending be continued to the June 17th meeting. Okay? Can I please have a roll call vote?
Yes.
Lewis? Yes. Silbera? Yes. Don't worry. Yes.
Yes. Motion carried unanimously. Yes, Mrs. Don't go. I'm sorry.
I wanted to ask the question, but we have already voted. I just wanted to make sure that we're, you know, sensitive to the people that are here tonight and have brought the issue forward and-
tonight, and I brought the issue forward, and, and I know this, that this has been with the planning commission since March. And if we are able to make a decision by the next meeting, it's not gonna add more than two weeks to the, to the whole process. Okay.
Good comment. Thank you. Let's go on to advisement of public notices. And there is no report? Is that correct? Okay. City managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I only have...
What's that on? I'm sorry.
I only have two items tonight. First, Mayor, I'd like to offer staff's condolences for the loss of your father, and let you know that you're in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you.
And second, Steve's not here with us tonight, because his daughter is graduating from OLF along with Lucy's son. And I would just like to say congratulations to both Sydney and Trent on their eighth-grade graduation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go on to city council member reports, and tonight we'll start with Mrs. Stonegrove.
All I have for tonight is, I would like to congratulate the graduating seniors, the class of 2015, at Los Banos High School, Pacheco High School, and San Luis High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to Mr. Freya.
First, express deepest sympathies, Mayor, loss of your father.
Thank you.
It was a beautiful tribute today, if your daughter and Ms. Lewis were able to sing and make, in the celebration of life at the mass, a beautiful tribute to a very beloved individual, and with all, all military and proper honors. And so, once again, heartfelt sympathies there. Moving on, coming up, we have Flag Day, and Flag Day is 14th. There'll be a Flag Day ceremony here in City Hall, the 10th, June the 10th, 6 o'clock. Yalks do a Flag Day. If you wanna learn the history of the American flag, it's a great opportunity to do it. And that is 6 o'clock, June 10th. And then Father's Day in the Park is Saturday, June 20th. Whenever I do these, whenever I, I'm doing the music for this, once again, last year, we put together a rock band from my old rock band from 40 years ago, and played together for the first time in 40 years, and played our old classic 70s stuff. This year, I always try to showcase the local talent. If you had a chance to hear Debbie Lovato at the Relay for Life, you, you know she's an outstanding singer, and she's gonna be singing our set, The Women of Rock. And Kyle Chapman will be playing guitar, Pedro Correia will be playing guitar, Dr. Don Carter will be playing bass, and Patrick Gomes will be playing drums. And also, that same day, starting off at 11 o'clock, Shay Mahia Gomes is going to be playing her ukulele and singing, her, her music. And the band Fur Drive, which features Kyle Chapman and Vanessa Lovato, both graduates of, of our music program. And Fur Drive has performed here in town as well. And they're starting at noon, and then Debbie, and that show will be at 1 o'clock. So we hope you can make it down there, get some breakfast, there'll be food, good times, kick it in the shade, and enjoy the music. Take care, and congratulations to all the graduates. Los Banos High, we'll see you Friday.
Let's go on to Mr. Silveira.
I thought Ms. Lewis was next.
Did I miss one? I did. I am sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Mayor. I too want to give you my condolences, and in regards to your father's passing, it was my pleasure to have known him for the years that I knew him. He was a sweet and kind and gentle man. And I wish the best to you and your family. I understand what it's like to, to lose your last parent, especially when you spend years caring for them. So it can be a little rough and rocky road for a while, but, you know, God will sustain you through it, and you'll, you'll be okay down the road. Merced County Fair starts next Wednesday, on the 10th, and it goes through Sunday, the 14th. There'll be some wonderful entertainment, and as usual, it is a safe place to be, just like here in Los Banos. So I invite the public to come and see all of the kids from the county of Merced, with the 4-Hers and the FFA participate. We're building a new barn this year at the fair. It won't be ready for this year's participation, but it will be ready for next year. And I'm really excited about that barn that's going up. It's been a long time coming. And other than that, I just wanna say, go Warriors, for all the Warrior fans that are out there.
Mrs. Silveira?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I too want to offer my condolences to you and your family. I know it's a difficult time. Couple of things that I had here was, again, on June the 8th, Monday, June 8th, is the Donate for Debbie Blood Drive. It's a blood drive in, in honor of Debbie Perre. And that's at the fairgrounds in the O'Bannon Building, from 2:30 till 6 o'clock that night. Also, I wanted to congratulate all our new firemen on all their promotions. Want to congratulate the new soon-to-be officers, as soon as they finish the academy. They're gonna have a busy six months ahead of them, and I look forward to when they can get out on the streets for us. And that's all I had for tonight. Oh, one other thing was, is Chief Marison, I really like the new patches. And maybe if there's some way that we could get that patch up on the city's website, or, you know, on, just so everybody can see what we're talking about. And hopefully, your first time seeing it isn't when you're out there on an emergency or something. They're pretty cool. So, congratulations, everybody.
Well, let me echo everyone else's sentiments, and, and say congratulations to all the graduates of all the schools, eighth grade and, and high school. And the, the two chiefs, thank you for the excellent presentation. Looking forward to having more new, new faces come in. I know it's a tough road, hiring people, and you have to do it right the first time. There are no second chances. And you guys do a great job. So thank you so much. The, the other things that were mentioned, the Merced County Fair, please, if you can attend, it's a, it's a, it's a great place to be, just like the Los Banos Fair. And we're lucky, we have two of them within a few months of each other. So I usually don't tell people to spend their money out of town, but I think Merced County Fair is worth it. So with that, I would like to read a continuance adjourned to 4:00 PM, Wednesday, June 10th, 2015, to hold a closed session conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, city count, city manager Carrigan, city attorney Vaughan, city clerk, human resources director Maloney, finance director Williams, legal counsel Truffaut, employee organizations, Los Banos Police Officers Association, LBPoa, Los Banos Police Sergeant Association, LBPSA, Los Banos Police Dispatchers Community Services Officers Association, LBPDCSOA, and the Los Banos Firefighter Association, LBFFA. And unrepresented miscellaneous employees being held in the council chambers at 520J Street, Los Banos, California. We are adjourned at 9:13.